It is March 6, 2023, 7:32. March 6, 2023. It's 7:32. I'll call this meeting to order. Ms. Mandy Pelly, I entertain a motion to admit visitors.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following persons be admitted to the meeting. Derek Klein, Maureen Doherty, Carol Duprow, Stephanie Connelly, Lillian Hardman, Joseph Carisi, Susan Dublin, Carol Miller, Brian Carter, Gerard Gordon, Mason Murray, Sophia Malibu, Diane Coppola, Escoli Givano, David Palumbo, Debbie Carbone, Arthur Newman, Linda McDonald, Rob Harmoni, Valerie Pravidi, Matthew Pravidi, Patrick Daly, Jonathan Eichmann, Phil Haley, Moken Barnes, Brad McBraddan, Anthony DeSteven, and Scott Daley.
On the motion to admit, any discussion? Seeing not all of us at table, please say aye.
Aye.
Votes unanimous. We just give the visitors a moment to get into the room. So in the event we're counting tonight, I have five tellers. Counting on my right, the front and the floor will be Lori Capazudo. Counting on my left, the front and the floor will be Jeff Simons. Counting the bleachers, on my left, Joe Davis. And he will count the green and yellow section. Hugo Weiner will come the green middle section. And Andrea Spano will count the two sections on my right. In the event we have to take a hand count. All the registered voters, particularly if you're counting, make sure they're wearing, you can see their yellow ribbon. All visitors should be wearing a black ribbon. Please turn off your cell phones. Please do not shout out or speak from your chair or to the microphone. Say your name and address for the record. And wait to, when you're called upon, say your name and address for the record before speaking. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant and to refer to the articles by an hour and further to dispense with the reading of the return of service by the constable.
On the motion, any discussion? Seeing not all of us at table, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Article 1. Oh, I'm sorry. Pledge allegiance, please, this is me.
Please rise to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Article 1, this is a citizen's petition. The petitioner is here, Mr. Austin, you have the floor.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the Code of North Reading General Bylaws Chapter 25 assessments as specified in Article 1 as granted in the warrant.
We have the motion, does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Ms. Mandy Pelly.
The Board of Selectmen does not recommend modification.
Does the Finances Committee wish to make recommendations, Mr. Ollie?
Point of order. Point of order. Mr. Moderator.
The Finances Committee does not recommend.
Mr. Moderator, point of order?
Yes.
Yes. On the meeting of February 27, Selectmen, Mr. Ollie refused himself from participating in the discussion on the issue of this petition. We'd like to know what has changed for him to participate in the current conversation after having refused himself prior.
Ms. Ollie.
Absolutely nothing has changed. I did not refuse myself in the discussion in relation to the citizen's petition in the special town meeting. Nothing's changed. I did not refuse myself.
But you do, Mr. Austin.
Nothing has changed in relation to the special town meeting.
Before we get to the discussion, I'll remind everyone that this is a bylaw article related to betterment. This is not a discussion of any sewer proposal. That is not before this body tonight. This is to change the bylaw back to, basically back to what it was. I'm sure someone on the board side could claim that better than I. But I would urge you to please stay within the four corners of the article and talk only to the bylaw. If not, I will have to interrupt you. It is a very large audience. One of the largest ones I've had in many, many years. Anyone seeking recognition? The lower roles to microphone, please.
Where's your microphone?
You can come right up front. There are two microphones here in the center, as well.
I have 124 field press errors, North Reading. I think, just think that this gentleman should get up in time of his article before people start having conversation about it.
Mr. Austin, we have five minutes. And this is why you put forth this petition.
Thank you. Good evening, fellow residents of North Reading. As most of us know, the federal bylaw concerns how butters for an infrastructure project can be assessed, meaning how liens can be placed on their homes to pay for a project. As we have seen over the last few weeks, there are options to fund infrastructure projects that do not include the assessment of benefits. Tonight's vote would only impact proposals that include betterment on sewer projects. This bylaw, in its entirety, covers several types of projects. But the only type of project that will be affected by this proposed change are sewer projects. Before June of 2022, the bylaw handled sewer projects the same way as water projects. But after the change, sewer projects are broken out in the bylaw to be handled differently. Tonight's vote is to change the bylaw back to the exact wording that was in place before the change in June of 2022 and reestablish the protections that apply to the butters of any other type of infrastructure project in our town to the butters of sewer projects. Under either form of the bylaw, when the town develops a sewer infrastructure project that includes a betterment assessment, the people of the town are divided into two overlapping groups. The first group includes all residents of the town. Of course, this includes the butters. The second group is made up exclusively of butters that live directly next to the proposed sewer infrastructure. The project costs are split between costs to be paid by the butters and costs to be paid by the town's general fund, which is funded by all taxpayers of the town. Prior to the June 2022 bylaw change, if a sewer infrastructure project was proposed, the group of butters had a vote. And for a betterment to be assessed, a majority of butters, both by count and by water flow growth project, had to vote to accept the betterment. This was to ensure that the project was prudent and a good value for money in order for the town to be able to assess needs on butters' properties. Then, the whole town would vote at town meeting to see if all members of the town would agree to fund the remainder of the project. If a butters agreed to betterment assessment and town meeting agreed to pay for the remaining balance from the general fund, the project would move forward. If the amount of money to be paid by the general fund required a two-and-a-half override, a special town election would be held to approve the override. After the change in June of 2022, the town meeting vote and special election requirements remain the same. But the vote for butters was stripped from the bylaw. It was an important protection for butters, and we need to take action to reestablish it. The change in the bylaw is not just about the removal of the butters' vote, but also about how the costs of sewer and infrastructure projects are divided. Before the change, the costs were split between the butters and the town's general fund, with the general fund covering at least 50% of the cost. However, after the change, the select board has the power to buy the costs as they seem fit. Last fall, we saw an example of a proposal that could not have been made before the bylaw was changed. Immediately after the change, the select board proposed that a butters pay 53% of a $130 million project, and the general fund covered the remaining 47%, whether or not a butters ever connected to the new infrastructure and without a butters' vote to approve the betterment. It's important to note that the June of 2022 change in the bylaw only affects sewer infrastructure projects. Other types of projects, such as water projects, were not impacted at all by the change. This means the protections that were previously in place for butters to sewer infrastructure projects have been specifically targeted and removed. So why is it important to restore the butters' vote? First and foremost, it's about protecting the rights and financial well-being of all residents of North Reading. By ensuring that butters have a say in whether or not a betterment can be assessed on their properties, we are ensuring that they have a voice in decisions that can have a significant impact on their finances and quality of life. A butters should have a say in whether or not they want to take on the financial burden of the project that is above and beyond the burden placed on each and every taxpayer of the town. In addition, restoring the butters' vote helps to ensure that a proposed project is supported by the community as a whole. When a butters have a say in matter, more reasonable proposals must be made. This means that a butters are more likely to support a proposed project which can lead to greater community buy-in and cooperation. This in turn can lead to a more successful and efficient project. In conclusion, the upcoming vote on amending the federal bylaw is a crucial issue for all residents of North Reading. By restoring the butters' vote, we can protect the rights and financial well-being of our residents, promote community buy-in and cooperation, and ensure transparency and accountability in our local government. I urge all residents to vote in favor of amending the bylaw and restoring the butters' protections. Thank you.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
My name is Andrew Schultz. Some of you may know I served on the select board from 2017 to 2020. Full disclosure, I'm also a native butter as the office manager owns the Park Place condominium. And I would be able to assess it as well if this bylaw was not changed. I just wanted to speak, and I agree with you, about the bylaw. Because I don't know whether this will pass or fail. It's probably going to change whether North Reading has a sewer or not. Because I believe the select board now is looking for alternatives that don't include a betterment. And that's something I support. I did not support the original numbers that came out. They were too high on the people around the root. I said as much in a workshop for business owners as I told the library. But what I am concerned is, these people on all these boards are volunteers. I can't tell you how many hours a week I put in when I was on the board. Probably 15 to 20 hours a week. And you can disagree with some of these politics, their positions. But when I see some of the bits where you're all going at the people personally on social media, it hurts me. And I see the numbers on this board that I didn't agree with on a regular basis. It's well documented. But no one's trying to go bathroom deal. No one's trying to remove people in the town. What they are trying to do, and I don't agree with the numbers. So I'm with you guys on the numbers that came out. But when I read stuff like, this person has an income of $10,000, that's not the case. They're just volunteers like you guys for all residents of the town. And I just wish some of the social media stuff could tone down a bit. And again, I'm with you guys on the numbers, but I'm not with it on some of the attacks on some of these people. And so I think that's where I wanted to speak out to them. Thank you.
Dana Rowe, 12 Dogwood Lane. If this bylaw is not changed, does that mean if they expand the sewerage to another area of town, the Board of Selectmen could be a different board? And they could decide that instead of having the assessment at, say, 70-30, they could decide they want the assessment to be 60-40? So they could change all sections of the town to whatever they wanted? And that makes me a great concern because I don't think in my lifetime they'll expand any. But if they do, then these people are left hanging out as to whatever the president of the board decides they want to do.
Anyone else seeking recognition? Mr. Ollie.
I just want to tell you how much I enjoy spending my money with 700, like, years and years. It's so good to see everybody home. It's so good to see such interest in what we're talking about. What we're, basically, again, the issues are a bit, they are somewhat tied together, but good opportunity too. And what we're talking about tonight is changing the bylaw back to what it was two years ago. We came before this town meeting last year seeking a change in the bylaw because the bylaw that's being presented this evening is not workable for major projects, particularly sewer projects. You have to understand that when we had this betterment issue in place, as we do with the current bylaw for private ways, where each neighborhood is going to be impacted and potentially better, would have the opportunity to vote before you came to town meeting, whether they wanted to have their neighborhood or whether they would be sidewalk, whether they would want their private way to be paved, to decide with the neighborhoods to agree to have a betterment assessed on their property. Keep in mind, a betterment is a lien on your property. So it's a very serious matter, obviously. And nobody up here would take the likely never has. But if we look at the magnitude of some projects which could be coming on down the road here, is it feasible and doesn't make sense to have once, even my, the betterment bylaw that's being proposed requires each neighborhood, each street, to vote individually, not collectively? So if you're going to maybe, you know, say, Main Street, North Street, Park Street, Congress Street, the whole road, each one of those neighborhoods collectively, if they're getting individually, and take a position. If, in this particular case, this part of the project here, if Congress Street says yes, Congress Street says yes, Main Street says yes, North Street says yes, we can't effectively finance the project. So the project that may be the best interest of the community as a whole can't move forward because of this impediment. Keep in mind, you know, there's a concern, you know, the Board of Selectmen can just, really, really want to decide something 30, 60, 40. That's not the case. You, this body, town meeting, keep in mind, any particular project that we're going to be undertaking here. This ought to require town meeting appropriation. And within that motion for appropriation, that's to identify the source of funding. And including that funding would be betterments. If that's what town meeting chose to do, not the board, if that's what you chose to do. If it requires borrowing, it requires two-thirds vote, not a majority of this body, to determine how we're going to finance these projects. What we proposed last year was an opportunity for us to have the flexibility, and I say us collectively, us, not the board, town meeting, to have the flexibility to move this town forward with major projects, infrastructure projects, in order to address, you know, whether it be public health concerns, economic impact concerns, or anything else we want to do. In collaboration with the planning commission, there's only changes that may be proposed. If you remove that flexibility, remove the opportunities that we may have to move this town forward, if you provide one neighborhood, which may be a lichpin for a project, have vetoed before it even comes to this body, does that make sense? We didn't propose this change just because of the sewer project. Yes, the sewer project was intended for to look at the mechanisms of financing and to say, what do we have within our bylaws and the authority, the authority to do? We went, well, this doesn't work. This is, it just doesn't work. So the safety hazard in place is that the board can't act by themselves. When it comes to appropriating the money, it's a two-thirds vote of this body, and it's you collectively, two-thirds voting to appropriate the money, and you deciding whether or not betterments are going to be assessed on people's homes. Not us, you. You know, it wasn't the best thing, it was the community. So what we're suggesting, and we were through this last year, and had an awful lot of thought, and public hearings about it, and if you weren't tuned in, you know, I'm sorry we didn't capture your interest at the time. But don't think of it just in terms of a proposed sewer project that may be coming to you over the next few months that hasn't even been finalized yet. Think about what opportunities we provide ourselves and flexibility to move any particular infrastructure project forward. And there was, the old bylaw is a serious impediment to get that done. And we could be, you know, a small group of people, not the majority, not too present, a small group of people that serves a major factor in denying the town opportunity to move forward. So that's all the rest. We're not taking away people's choices and opportunities. People ask me about this bylaw. What about the property owners on Main Street? What if they don't live in town? They own the property, they don't have the time. What about the tenants that live in a property believing that they're subject to increased rents that they haven't decided? The answer to the old bylaw is no. The answer to the new bylaw is no. There's not a registered voter here. If a tenant is there, they're going to register to vote. They can come here and they can decide whether or not they want benefits of people's property or not. And assess everybody across the board. But aside some of the mechanism of financing, we would have the flexibility. Apparently, we have the flexibility to allow town meeting to make those determinations. What's being proposed to go back to the bylaw is a serious impediment. And I just want to ask you all to consider that. Nobody up here was looking to, or is looking to, unfairly calm anyway. And we were talking about the proposed sewer project, but we had not presented what the final project was going to be to be yet. We did a lot of thinking in public. We started the public hearings, the public process, with a proposal to talk about, to stimulate discussion, and it worked. We had over 700 people participate in our open meetings. We had a lot of people emailing us with questions. And we heard, we heard everybody. And went back to the drawing board to see what can we offer town meeting for a proposal. Something like this. But it didn't change our feeling in relation to the bylaw change that we proposed last year and this body overwhelmingly supported and changed. Because the flexibility to move forward is necessary. To remove that flexibility, first, it's everyone else. You still have your say. You still can make the determination. And the more respectful they ask you to consider that, give town meeting, which is your people, the opportunity to do what's in the town's best interest as a whole. And don't let, few people in a single neighborhood stumble on any future major infrastructure project going forward. Or just the ones that are going to be proposed in the next few months. But that, well, think forward, which is what we do. So we respectfully ask you to consider that. We think that it's a bad idea to go back to where we were. If we thought it was okay to have it the way it was, we would never have proposed anything last year. We appreciated your support last year. We asked for your support this year. And again, asking to, and again, I understand and appreciate the process that's going through here. I applaud the reference. But it's a bad idea. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, hi. Joey Coney, 365 North Street. I just wanted to say, Steve, I think you remember that I was actually interested last year when you brought this forward. So I was paying attention. And I just want to say that I clearly understand what the select board is saying. But I also want to point out that to many of us in this room, $30,000, $40,000 is a huge change in our life. And I don't, unfortunately, I'm not in a personal position to allow the town to decide for me if I can afford extra $40,000 on my house. So for all of us, it's not about that we don't want what's best for this town. It's not about that we don't want what's best for this town. It's about, unfortunately, there's a lot of us who aren't in a position to say, sure, work out the numbers, and then I would just trust everyone else who lives here to make sure that my kids can still go to college or that I can move when my kids finish school if I want to. I'm not in a position to say that.
Sir. May I speak?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Paul DeNero, 402 Hart Street. Mr. Ollie, actions speak louder than words. When you say no one's trying to hurt people in the town, I agree with that. But your actions, the select board's actions in coming up with an initial proposal for $46,000 for single-family homes, $357,000 for condos, and everyone knows, who knows the rest. You had the opportunity, knowing that you had changed the bylaws, to take away the interest of the, of the people who are, who are the butters. And you had the opportunity to come up with a proposal that would be acceptable by the people that you stripped their rights of. But instead, you didn't come up with the highest number possible, and I asked you why? And your response to me was, it's in the bylaw. What you meant was that the state of Massachusetts, the general laws, say that you can have a betterment, and they recommend a betterment would be 50% of the project. So that's how you came up with the number. You used the state law wording that allowed you to. You didn't come up with 49%, 48%. you to, you didn't come up with 49%, 48%, you came up with 50%, and that's what it was like. So people are here tonight because they are beside themselves, that they cannot trust the town to carry out the needs of the town, without trampling on, you know, getting, getting a mean foot on your, on your house, on your property. Who'd ever think that that would happen by a benevolent, timely? And so, you know, I don't know where you come up with this thinking. Now, I asked you one time if anyone on the board was a butter, and then you were asked again another time, and each time you said no. So, you know, how can you say that, that if you have, you didn't say you have a heart, if you meant that to say that you don't have a heart? And, and so, I don't think it's true. I think you have to be honest with people and say, we did it because we wanted money for the town. You told me on three occasions, the town doesn't need a sewer system, the town just needs the money, that we have to fix buildings and everything else. And so now you want to scatter the townspeople $46,000 because the town's select board needs 20 months. That's just not a reason to go to the bylaw, strip out the laws that were there. I think that's been, something underhanded, things on that. So, there are many other things to say.
Mr. O'Leary.
Just as points of clarification. I've spent the better part of 50 years serving this community as a volunteer, and have been fortunate to enjoy life's very support, because I hope and I believe that the mascot derby, the mascot derby, the people who anticipated elections over the years, believe that I am truthful, and I am honest, and I try and, I try to strike with people, and don't miss my words terribly, as I try and curb what I'm thinking. So I think it's very unfair. I think I had heard a thing say, I developed that a long time ago, and I appreciate the concern. For my colleagues up here, and over here, we do volunteer on time, we do have the time, especially during the time, we do work very hard to listen well, we try and reflect, not only on the beginning, but really the ones that you were willing to spend the time, they were willing to spend the time to research the projects, and not just follow the beginning, but to help formulate. You know, and my philosophy has always been, you know, how long have been the time, you're willing to trust me to do the homework, and I can forward with some proposals. Not all the proposals we can forward are popular, not all the proposals are going to fly, and that's okay. But you can be sure that people up here are spending hundreds and hundreds of hours, you know, researching these issues, sort of everything else. Please understand, you know, we earned your trust, and we deserve to have your trust. You can call it a question, a conclusion, we come to, don't question our goal, these are our intentions. I have served a lot of people in these, and I may not agree with a lot of people in these initiatives, but I certainly, I never quite question the goals of their intentions, and nobody's ever tried to mislead the public, particularly in terms of projects that we're talking about before. Same thing with this body. But keep in mind, as I said earlier, we put this proposal out here, which is a very proposal to gather information and feedback from the community, for the $46,000, $37,500. That whole proposal has evolved over the last several months. It's not even on the table right now. It's not even on the table. So it's important for you to understand that we are listening, we're earning your trust, I believe you are, and you should listen to us. Again, you don't have to accept our agreements. Don't question our goal, these are our intentions. You know, and for someone to stand in front of you and say that I said certain things that I did not, I'm not going to give you the benefit, but it's not a benefit, right? So the thing is, you need to understand, the bylaw that's being proposed is not in the best interest of the community, based upon the research that you've done, your lack of efficiency, and quality of efficiency, and from the conclusion that you agreed with last year. If you change your mind, you've changed your mind. This is truly in line with the beauty of this land system, and over town meeting, you have the ability to appeal and do what's in the town's best interest. If you believe this is in the town's best interest, you can vote in the bylaw. I just want to make sure that you're voting, and you're well informed, as to what the consequences of our decisions are, and will be, in an collective opinion. We should write to the board.
Niti Wolf, 400 St. Spur Lane, I move the question.
We have a motion to move the question. So we have the article before us. If all of you are vote, all those in favor, please say aye. Oppose. The ayes have it. Motion carries. I'll entertain one more motion. Mr. Nigga Collie.
Mr. Moderator.
Please. Mr. Nigga Collie, you got a line for this motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn this meeting, seeing the end.
Point of order being called. This is point of order.
Amy DeChara, 24, Field Press Terrace. We have not voted on the amendment.
What amendment?
On the article.
We voted on the article?
No, we did not.
We, excuse me.
I just.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Here's what we voted on. We voted on Mr. Austin's motion, which I will read to.
I heard we moved to the.
Which I will read to the group. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the Code of North Reading General Bylaws, Chapter 25 assessments as specified in Article One as printed in the warrant. So, Mr. Austin's article, the petition has been on.
I'll say yes again.
All right, you have got to move in.
Thank you.
Under motion to amend Article One. All those in favor, please.
Point of order. My name is Owen Wusheng on the floor, Robin Road. I second the motion. Please follow the rules. Follow the rules, all of you. That's ridiculous. You call everybody else to follow the rules? You know the rules better than anybody else. Follow the rules.
Under motion to amend, all in favor, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.